Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. This is a regular meeting of the Elizabeth Board of Education pursuant to New Jersey statutes and the rules adopted by the Board of Education. Notice of this meeting will send to the Star Ledger and Cable Vision of Elizabeth. In addition, this notice is posted on the bulletin board in the lobby of 500 North Broad Street, and pursuant to this act, a copy has been filed with the City Clerk of Elizabeth, New Jersey. We want to welcome everyone present here at Donald Sauer Early Childhood Center, School Number 51, and to our television viewers to this April 8, 2019, meeting of the Board of Education. We are here to govern, provide management oversight, and make policy for the district. The superintendent manages the district. This is a meeting of the Board in public, not a meeting of the public. This meeting is being recorded and will become part of the Elizabeth Board of Education's permanent record. In order that the recording will adequately reflect the proceedings, please refrain from talking while others are speaking. We also ask that you silence the sound of your electronic devices since it is legally mandated that these proceedings be accurately recorded. We may have to ask for order periodically should noise begin to interfere with the recording capabilities. We are pleased that you have taken time this evening to join us here for our Board of Education meeting. Thank you for your interest in the Elizabeth Public Schools. There will be a public portion for citizens to address the Board. Participants for the public portion may sign up to the start of the meeting so that they have the opportunity to speak. The sign-in sheet states the name, address, telephone number, and the reason that the person wants to comment whether it is an agenda item or a general education item. Mr. Kennedy, roll call, please.
Barbosa.
Here.
Bathalas.
Carvalho.
Chevres.
Here.
Hernandez. Jacobs.
Present.
Marina Ortega. Neron. Goncalves.
Present. At this time, may we all rise and Admiral William F. Hawsey, Jr., Health and Public Safety Academy, JROTC, color guard, please present the colors. At this time, I call upon Ms. Justice Rivera for the Pledge of Allegiance, which is a 12th grade student from Thomas Jefferson Arts Academy.
I pledge allegiance to the pride of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Oh, say can you see by the dawn's early light What so proudly we hailed at the twilight's last gleaming Whose broad stripes and bright stars throw the perilous fight O'er the ramparts we watched were so gallantly streaming And rocket red glare, the bombs bursting in air, gave proof through the night That our flag was still there Oh, say does that star-spangled banner yet wave O'er the land of the free and the home of the brave?
At this time, the Pledge of Ethics will be Alexander Hamilton Preparatory Academy students Elizabeth Point Dujor and Adam Mary Perez.
As a member of the Elizabeth Public Schools professional learning community, I will treat people as I wish to be treated, and to do that, I pledge to: Understand that the school community is a special place; Listen respectfully when someone else is speaking by paying close attention and not interrupting; Speak in a calm voice and use proper language; Dress appropriately for teaching and learning; Inspire the best in myself and others by celebrating successes and learning from mistakes; Care about others by demonstrating acts of kindness; Be a lifelong learner by taking every opportunity to learn from others.
Thank you, ladies. Can we give one big round of applause for our junior ROTC, ladies and gentlemen? And you may all be seated. At this time, we would like to present the President's Tour video.
Hi, my name is Stephanie Kankavis. I'm the Elizabeth Board of Education President, and I am joined today with...
Charlene Bathalas.
And we are currently at Elmore School Number 12, and we're doing the You Are One of a Kind Tour, and I have one of our amazing students here.
Amy Angel Gomez.
And what are we doing today?
Um, today we're gonna be singing, um, the Army Jersey song.
Wonderful, can't wait to hear it!
New Jersey, New Jersey, come to our attic school and see. Make your peace, try to ease, turn and look at what you can be.
Women can do exactly what men can.
Go ahead!
Women, women can do, women can do exactly what men can, if not, and if not, they can do it, they can do it even better than men, they can do it exactly as men.
Good to see you!
Good to see you! I'm still here!
Yes, you are, how many years has it been?
Um, maybe thirty-one, thirty-two years.
So guys, if you haven't noticed yet, so Ms. English was actually my teacher. Don't forget, this is where you come from, make sure, and that's actually like a number one reason why I became part of the Board of Education, is, like you, I always wanted to give back, and this was me pursuing. That dream of mine was actually to make sure that I give back to our future, and our future is each and every one of you here in this classroom, so don't forget where you come from, that's the only thing that I ask for you guys, okay?
Welcome to School 14, home of the Lions!
Do we see where the minute hand is over there?
Yes!
It's between what two numbers?
Uh, four and three.
Okay. Right? Alright, high five, you guys, that's right.
You're never too young to start thinking about the future, and that's why when I come to these older grade levels, I tend to start asking what you guys want to do when you're older, or what kind of high schools do you want to go to. As your teacher said, all of our high schools actually have something really good to offer. So your curriculum is the same across the board, but they all have something extra special to offer.
Ready?
Surprise!
What a pleasant surprise! Oh, we're so happy you're here!
Some immigrants, they move, they move to immigrate to another place, they like, they try to like fit in, camouflage yourself almost like, 'cause they...
Do we all enjoy reading?
Yes.
Do we all read at home after school hours?
No.
Okay, see, very good. So can I ask you guys for a favor? And I will come back and I will check in on you guys. So starting from today, can you guys somewhat promise me that you will make an attempt to read after school? Like, once you go home before bedtime or something, start up a book, go to the library, we can get you guys some books if you guys want, just attempt to read.
Welcome to Benjamin Franklin School Number 13, home of the Owls!
I am Dasha Bagad, I am One of a Kind.
At this time, we're actually gonna have Student Excellence Presentations. Our student honorees for this evening have demonstrated compassion, empathy, selflessness, and generosity to making significant contributions to help others in need. Elizabeth Public Schools prides itself on creating safe and caring learning environments by promoting social, intellectual, and physical wellness. We are pleased to introduce several groups of students from our high schools who are going to share their experiences fundraising and raising awareness for different charitable causes and organizations, as well as learning about the related global issues that affect our society. Please welcome students from Alexander Hamilton Preparatory Academy, We Have Character Club, We Walk For Water.
To start off by saying thank you to the Board of Education for approving this fundraiser that was nine hours long.
Our goal was to raise a total of $1,000. We went over that mark and raised a total of $1,590.
So to give you guys a little background information on how that money is spent, $25 helps two people gain access to clean water. $100 allows us to install pipe cleaners for clean water inside our home, and $250 for clean water for a family for life. So imagine that more than $1,500 is being donated to Haiti and Ecuador.
I would also like to thank the Board President also for approving this event, and also Mr. DeLory, my vice principal, who also provided us with food for the whole event. And overall of the event, the event was from 10:00 AM to 7:00 PM. I dedicated my time, I couldn't stay for the whole time because I had other things that I had to attend in the afternoon, but for the moment that I was there, in the morning, we had different activities such as learning how to carry water, because in a lot of third world countries, you know, water has to be carried on the head. So we wanted the students to experience how that was, how it felt like, and also sometimes students would have to go for about five to six hours without drinking water to see how it feels like not having water. I remember about a month ago, if probably, when Elizabeth had the whole water situation, a lot of the students were complaining because, you know, they said, "Oh, there's no water," but we wanted them to see how it feels like in other countries to have this as an issue every single day. So a total of $795 were sent to both Haiti and Ecuador. That money will be used for the underlying causes that Adam Mary listed. I have with me a PowerPoint presentation that I will be presenting. I am originally from Haiti, so I was given the opportunity to speak on my experience in the water crisis. Haiti has a population of about 11.24 million as of the 2017 census. I speak French and Creole both. The capital of Haiti is Port-au-Prince, and the official name is Republic of Haiti. About 42.3% of the total population struggle with access to clean drinking water. The country overall is very polluted, which is also one of the biggest causes of the water crisis, and the climate is hot overall. So that's also another big issue, because if you need clean water to drink and it's always hot, that's definitely gonna be a problem. I am originally from Cabale West, which is in the west side of Haiti. My father's side is from Jacmel and Marbial. Access to clean drinking water is scarce. In Haiti, the water company doesn't always provide water for all households. About two to three times in a week, a family would have to go out and purchase gallons of water, which is about $50 in America and over $500 in Haiti. When water isn't provided by the water company, people have to go out to the local river, and most of the time, the river isn't sanitary, because animals use it to bathe, people use it to do laundry, and it isn't safe to drink. So people who depend on the water either have a choice to go and choose to drink unclean water or to stay the whole day without having any water at all. These are some of the ways that water is retrieved. As you can see in the top, you see the young girl carrying the bucket on her head. We had students do that, but instead of a bucket, they had water gallons. This is a cistern, and when water is retrieved by the water company, people store their water in a cistern, and it can last for about two to three days maximum for a household of five to six, and the water is used for different things such as cooking, cleaning, bathing even. Hazards of unclean water. Unclean water has e. coli and the following. E. coli, if you may not know, is originally in our intestines, and when it's in there, it's safe. However, when it's ingested from outside sources, it can be detrimental. And unclean water also has a cause that leads to cholera, and cholera is similar to dysentery. If you drink unclean water, you will have a diarrheal disease that will last you probably the whole week, and sometimes if it's not treated, it can lead to death. After water is retrieved from a source, it has to be carried on the head. This is a water purification system, and particularly the money that we raised is also going to go towards this, and it's called the sand and gravel filter. And pretty much the dirty water goes from the top, and it is filtered down through different levels of sand and gravel, and has to come out through the pipe in little drops of water. This takes about a total of six hours just to get one full bucket of water. Last year, as a part of my AP Chemistry class, I was given the opportunity to witness the UN students designing solutions. And at this conference, students from different universities worldwide presented their findings to lead to the clean water crisis. And at this conference, chemical engineering students presented their research findings and designed solutions to the water crisis in developing nations. The goal was by 2030 to achieve universal and equitable access to safe and affordable drinking water for all, which is very important. Thank you.
That was wonderful, thank you, ladies. Next, please welcome our students from Johnny Dwyer Technical Academy, the Haitian Club Music Social Music School in Haiti. I apologize.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Jennifer Lamont. I'm the vice president of the Haitian Club, and this is the...
I'm the president. My name is Abdiyaz Dort, so I'm a junior, I'm a, oh sorry, sorry, I'm a senior at training, Dwyer Academy.
It's a great honor for us to stand in front of you this evening to talk about our fundraising activity. We are extremely proud to help young people in Haiti find an avenue to cope with stress and political demonstrations that resulted in school closing for two weeks.
Three weeks this past February.
We have collected a total of $2,200 for the past three years to help the children of Yankdamisoldo, which is a high school, which is school musical. Each year, we organize a benefit concert where 100% of the proceeds goes directly to the school. This organization started right after the earthquake, January 12, 2010, that everyone knows that it was a terrible moment for the population. It was an initiative of a teacher from Elizabeth School District, whose name is Yankdakxium, unfortunately he's not here today, that created FEE, which cooperated with the school in Haiti. The director of the school is Mr. Leonce Joseph.
I had an opportunity to talk to Mr. Xiume, and he said that one of the things that inspired him was to give a better opportunity to as many young people as possible, because of the need of support we were, we were motivated as students continue to make contributions toward this worthy cause. The organization has two campuses, one in Saint Mark and the other one in Dejune. Both schools are located in our Tboni Department, which is one of the 10 departments that Haiti is divided into. We support the music initiative due to the fact that playing musical instruments provide character development and builds...
Talent.
The instrument keep them from committing crime and/or their mischief, keep their mind on school, which help them secure a better future. It also made students happy, because sometimes students have their own issues to deal with. And you can go to the website or YouTube channel, they have F E E H Y dot org to see the kids graduating and parade procession. We have contacted the school to update the website to include last year graduation. So thank you so much to send to us.
At this time, we call up J. Christian Bowich Finance Academy, WE Community Service Club, WE Walk for Water.
Good afternoon. My name is Brandon Fernandez and-
My name is Shamaia Bowers.
And we are co-presidents of WE Program at J. Christian Bowich Finance Academy. So I'll be talking about what WE is. So WE is a movement that empowers people to change the world and make your actions count. WE provides campaigns and movements for childrens of any age and any location to take an initiative to volunteer, fundraise, raise awareness of a cause that matters. Most of them that have been talked about, like WE Walk for Water and many other campaigns. So at J. Christian Bowich Finance Academy, we participate in WE through the Community Service Club.
Okay, so the WE program was established in our school last year. The advisor last year was Ms. Fiallo, and the way WE kind of got involved is she came up to us one day and she asked us if we would mind being presidents of the club. So at the time, the two of us had no knowledge whatsoever of the WE club or what it was about or anything that they contributed to. So as a, as a way to get the WE club started, our first action was to start recycling in the school. Throughout the day, there are a lot of water bottles being used and being thrown into the trash, and WE came up with a way to save the planet in our own little way and make our school a better place. So we, we took the milk crates from, well, not took, well, WE actually could, yes. We recycled the milk crates from the cafeteria and we each crate went to a room and the water bottles were, you know, thrown into the crate. We collect on Wednesdays and Fridays, and overall, the students do participate in our recycling program, and each member is required to, each member of the WE program or Community Service Club is required to empty the crates at least twice a month. As of last year, we actually, we also had a fundraiser, which was called WE Walk for Water. It was an overnight event, which was from 6:00 PM to 6:00 AM from a Saturday to a Sunday, I mean, excuse me, a Friday to a Saturday, and throughout the night, we participated in water-related games. Also, our students were, each member of the team was supposed to be walking around the gym with a bucket of water to kind of symbolize what the children in Sierra Leone go through on an everyday basis. We ended up raising $1,500, and this September or October, we were honored at WE Day for being top five schools in the country. So that was a plus for us. We, we had a lot of fun last year. It was a troubling 12 hours. We were up for more than 24 hours. It was a struggle, but we got through it, and initially, we-
We pulled through.
We pulled through. This year, we started with a Tree of Warmth as our fall fundraiser. As you guys know, this winter was a really harsh winter, and we did a little research and we found out that the least donated item to homeless shelters are socks. So in a way to give back, we began to collect socks, scarves, hats, blankets, all gently used or new, and we donated to the Elizabeth Homeless Coalition. This Friday, actually, we have our second annual WE Walk for Water event. Instead of WE Walk for Water, we're focusing on literacy, which is another pillar of WE, and this year, all proceeds from our Friday's fundraiser will be going to getting our book published, which the WE club has come up with an ABC, an ABC book, a bilingual ABC book for pre-kindergartners and kindergartners about healthy eating. So we found a way to incorporate literacy, health, and all into one fundraiser.
So I'll be talking about what this year's event is about. So this Friday, April 12, from 6:00 PM to 6:00 AM, we will be hosting an overnight login event to fundraise and help publish our book that members of the WE club have illustrated and composed. So it's a fundraiser. The book is about ABCs. We kind of put it all in one. The ABCs, believe it or not, comes in Spanish and English, but it's about healthy eating. So every letter correlates with a fruit or healthy vegetable, and it has a picture of vegetable with the letter, and it comes in English and Spanish so that, you know, and our goal is for every Elizabeth Public Schools, you know, elementary school, be able to have a copy of our book and learn their ABCs and about healthy foods, and even if they don't know English, you know, we have it in Spanish also. That's pretty much our goal this year.
As of right now, we currently have over 130 students participating in our event on Friday. Our building only has about like 450 students, so we definitely have an increase from last year. Last year, we had 70 students participate, and this year, we almost have doubled that amount. So with the efforts of the WE program, we have been successful in advertising and promoting the event, especially thanks to our advisor and our principal. We have tremendous support, and no matter what, they've always been there to guide us and to lead us on the right track as we deal with our fundraisers and all of our crazy ideas. Yes, so that's what we've been doing at J. Christian Bowich Finance Academy. Thank you for listening.
Amazing, amazing job, guys. And next up, we have EHS Frank J. Sicarelle Academy, National Honor Society Officers and Top Team Cancer Crushers, American Cancer Society. Come on up, guys.
Hi, my name is Jessel Negron. I'm the president of the National Honor Society at Frank J. Sicarelle Academy.
Hi, my name is Hillary Gomez, and I'm the treasurer of NHS at Frank J. Sicarelle Academy.
Hi, my name is David Hernandez. I'm secretary of the National Honor Society.
Hi, my name's, sorry, my name's Melissa Magala, and I'm vice president.
Today, we're going to be speaking about Relay for Life. So Relay for Life is a culminating activity for the American Cancer Society. Here are a few of our sponsors this year. The idea is that cancer doesn't sleep, so neither do we. So we held an overnight event March 15, which celebrated, remember, and where we fought back for cancer. This year, we had over 400 participants from four different high schools in Elizabeth. We had our school, Frank J. Sicarelle Academy, Hamilton Preparatory Academy, Thomas Jefferson Arts Academy, and Johnny Dwyer Technology Academy. So this is our fourth annual event, time having the event. Our first year, since our first year, we've raised, we've increased in how much we've raised. Last year, we raised about $50,000, and this year, we increased that to $79,000 since 2016. Since the year 2016, we've raised almost $200,000. All of this money goes towards the American Cancer Society, where they provide transportation for treatment. They also give patients wigs and any support that they need. So all of the money is going towards patients and supporting them, and it's all going to our, like, in our neighborhood. This year, we will be ending our event with a food truck festival, thanks to the support of the city of Elizabeth, our mayor, our board members, our superintendent, and school administrators. We hope to see everyone there. And before we finish, we want to recognize two teams. We have the biggest, well, one of our teams that raised the most within the Frank J. Sicarelle Academy, which is the Cancer Crushers. They're up here with us. And we also have another team that is sitting down over there, the Coco's Cure, which raised the most overall. Again, we want to say thank you.
And following them, we're going to stay with the EHS Sicarelle Academy Computer Club, U.S. First Grant for Robotics, and Union County STEM Grant.
So the Elizabeth High School FJC would like to present our first ever, first ever robotics team season. So our goal here is to present our team as supporting minorities and women in STEM. So about our team?
We are mostly of the underappreciated minorities. I took, I was a part of the competition that we were involved in, and I can tell that a lot of us, we were like kind of outcast because we didn't see many people who were just like us. So we are really representing like all of Elizabeth truly, and we've all, you know, come from different backgrounds, and we've expressed that, and we've been able to showcase that to other teams and build connections.
Well, being in the robotics team was really kind of that stepping stone for some of us, especially the girls on the team, which, because we all kind of aspire to follow careers in STEM, and, you know, stats show that graduates in STEM are less than a third. And this was kind of like that gateway to prepare ourselves for what comes in the future and kind of the pushback that a lot of women face when they do begin careers in STEM.
So a little bit about the program that we participated. So if you don't know, we participated in the International Robotics Competition called FIRST Robotics, and it was founded by Dean Kamen and Woody Flowers and under the parent organization of FIRST. And so students are, so the FIRST mission is to inspire students in STEM, and they do it regardless of any gender, race, or sexual orientation. One of the main culture of FIRST is gracious professionalism, in which that they understand the competitive nature of each event, but they value and embrace respect and empathy towards other team. And another thing, good thing about this event is that many colleges and universities, they provide over $8,000,000 of scholarship programs, and one of our seniors over here, Fernando Morales, he got accepted into Stevens under that scholarship. So a little bit about build season. Everything was built under the limitation of six weeks and under limited money and time, but a lot of effort went into this. As you can see, many of our students have independently learned all these things, such as CAD, which is Computer Aided Design, Java programming, mechanics, electronics, and even fundraising and outreach fundamentals. So since this is a relatively new team, most students had to learn it by themselves, which shows the drive of them to learn on their own.
Mount Olive was the first competition that we've ever been to, and it was very nerve-wracking, but it was a very exciting opportunity that we were given. I know personally myself, I was the female driver. Like, it was like, it wasn't a lot of us at the competition that were females and especially drivers. So it was very exciting for me to see that I have the opportunity to do all of this. And I love how it was celebrating a lot of us in different ways and different cultures and, yeah.
So, so at the competition, the judges were walking around and interviewing most of the teams in our pay area. And so they evaluated us and they gave us the highest rookie seed award, which is one of these amazing awards. These are, the Rookie All-Star Award is one of the highest awards given to any rookie team. They show exemplary action to follow the mission of FIRST, which is to inspire students of all backgrounds into the field of STEM. And so after attending this event, they allowed the qualifiers to be in the district championship, to compete for the district championship award.
To add about the Rookie Seed Award, that one also is the only award that they don't have to give. So for us to receive that award was very prestigious for us. And next, I would like to talk about our Telemundo interview during our FIRST Robotics event. This shows the opportunities and connections that we were allowed to make because of the team that we created this year. We were one of the teams, we were one of the few teams chosen to be interviewed because of our ethnic and diverse background. This opportunity has allowed us to showcase our unique talents that have acquired us as a result of our diverse background. It meant more than being recognized by such a largely esteemed channel, but it also served as a symbol that we were making change in our community. As you know, many Latinos do watch Telemundo. It was very, like, cool to see that channel that I grew up watching and as well as many Latinos to actually be on it.
All right, so now time to discuss the district championship event that we attended last weekend at Lehigh University. And so at the event, we did not compete per se with our robot, but we were qualified to receive an interview that would qualify us to win the Rookie All-Star at that level of event. And so that process was very nerve-wracking for all of us, being put into that room. It was a bit stuffy. We were all very nervous. But we did our best to kind of demonstrate how FIRST Robotics and being on Chronic or Delta meant more than just the machine we were building and meant more the skills that we were learning and the friendships we were making and the relationships that we- we were learning and the friendships we were making and the relationships that we were building.
So just a brief explanation, our team participates in two district events, which leads to the district championship. Since we won the Rookie All-Star Award at the district championship, they qualified the world championship at Detroit. So this is a basically a mapping of what our progress during the competition season. So our long-term goal is to increase our size by 20% at least by getting incoming freshmen from all backgrounds and genders. We were trying to focus on the mission of getting more minorities and females into our club. We're also trying to aim to fundraise at least fifteen thousand dollars for registration, equipment, and transportation. As you know, FIRST is not, is not a, you know, inexpensive event, it's very, there's very, there's a lot of cost to it. But mostly, we also want to raise awareness to the importance of STEM in our district. Since we're our first team, we're basically pioneering the first, another school of STEM. And we want to leave a legacy in Elizabeth High School and all our district. But more importantly, we also want to qualify and win the FIRST Worlds event now that we qualify. And so we have a current situation about it.
So kind of backtracking back to, we were talking about our district event at Lehigh University. So at that event, there were sixty teams from three different states, Delaware, Pennsylvania, and New Jersey competing. They were all competing for a coveted spot to compete at the world championship in Detroit, Michigan. And out of the sixty teams, only eight of them were chosen based on merit, and we were lucky enough to be one of them. So this means that we have a unique opportunity to be able to showcase our diverse background and the talents that we have acquired through the many experiences that we've had in this club. And we can showcase that to a large audience because this is a televised event. This is, this is highly esteemed event in our community and especially in FIRST. So our objective here is to change the culture of our schools, of Elizabeth, and our families. We want to break the mold of what it means to be from Elizabeth. We want to demonstrate the qualities that students from our background possess despite the differences that some might see as limitations, but we embrace wholeheartedly in our team. We believe this is what makes us different, what makes us strong. And as a result of this, we've got the opportunity to be approached by many sponsors such as Altice USA, Picatinny, who've covered a lot of the cost because without, without their help, we probably wouldn't have gone as far as we thought we would, you know, in the beginning. So Argosy gave us a rookie grant, which gave us basically all the basic materials that we, that we needed and the funds to be able to compete in our first competition. And as a result, we, we set a goal, a simple goal. Like if we're able to just drive, even just create a robot that drives, we'll be satisfied. And it was really unprecedented. We did not believe that we could achieve this level. And we're just so proud and we're so grateful to the community for the support that they've given us. Thank you.
So our team wants to showcase a little demonstration with the robot. No, this happens all the time. So as you can see, our robot design was based on a ramp. And so one of the main objectives of the competition was to climb a so-called habitat platform, which is about four to nine inches high wide, tall, sorry. And so, so there's this first ramp and a secondary ramp, which is the metal ramp. And then using a chain, chain system, it goes, reels downwards so that another, another team's robot can go climb that, to climb it and to land on that platform and score twelve points.
By the way, we named her Delta One. Delta One.
Little spin.
Do a donut, do a donut, 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 donut.
Again, thank you, Elizabeth Board of Education for allowing us to be here tonight.
And thank you guys for being here. At this time, next up, we'd like to welcome Thomas Jefferson Arts Academy, Jefferson Arts Relay for Life Team, Relay for Life, Jefferson Arts Freshman Class Officers, the Valerie Fund, Jefferson Arts Liberty Dancers, ASH Dance. Sorry Jeff, because at the start, we're just going to start with the Relay for Life kids. Sorry.
Good afternoon. My name is Julia Santiago and I was a part of the Relay for Life.
Hi, my name is Kaylee Volker and I was also part of the Relay for Life team.
Hi, my name's Aliana Maynard and I was also a part.
Hi, my name's John A. Martinez and I was also a part of Relay for Life.
Hello, my name's Christina Cordicata and very obviously, I was part of Relay.
Good afternoon. My name is Diana Chaviria and we are all representing the National Honor Society at Jeff. Speaking on behalf, I'm a little short. Speaking on behalf of the three Jefferson Relay for Life teams, I would like to start off by saying it was an honor and a pleasure to represent our school at the event. We also hold great honor in being able to participate in the event as a whole. For the last two years, we've dedicated all of our time and effort for about five months into raising money for a beautiful cause. If it wasn't for our principal, Mr. Ojeda, our, you can clap for him because he's amazing. Our National Honor Society advisor, Mr. Fontaine, who couldn't be here today. And Mr. Marsella, the man who made it all happen. We wouldn't have been able to participate and enjoy a beautiful night on the actual day of Relay. You might wonder why we do this. Why do we spend so much of our time and put in so much effort into a cause that's not directly benefiting us, but it's so much more than just a fundraiser? It's an experience that impacts each and every one of us as a whole. Each and every one of us have lost someone to cancer or know someone who has lost someone to cancer. It's important to us because we get to meet and spend time with people that we wouldn't have the chance to otherwise. As a whole, the three Jefferson teams alone raised seventeen thousand dollars. And that was twenty-two percent of all the money raised. It's an accomplishment that we are very proud of. We also hold great honor in the fact that it grew from only one Jefferson team participating last year to three Jefferson teams participating this year. And we hope that that number grows throughout the years because that only means that the money raised will grow. Most importantly, this fundraiser means so much to us students at Jeff because it's an event that I can personally say has brought us all closer together. Speaking on behalf of my team, the ten of us spent more time together within the five months than we did during the last four years. We were also able to involve the entire school and it's a different type of honor when your entire school is part of the work you've done. Relay for Life will always be an event that I know, not only I, but everyone who participated in will hold closely to their heart. Thank you for your time.
Next up, we'll call upon Jefferson Arts Freshman Class Officers, the Valerie Fund.
Hi, I'm Diana Valdez. I'm speaking in behalf of the freshman class for Thomas Jefferson Arts Academy. We decided to fund Gifts for the Valerie Fund and I know that's not like typical Toys for Tots or Relay for Life or whatever, but it's something that hits pretty close to home for me. I, I have been diagnosed with thoma, which is a type of cancer. It, um, it wasn't something that just happened. People can see something was wrong, but like, it wasn't something that I was alone with. You don't know what's happening when you're like in the ICU. You don't know what's happening. You don't know if you're going to end up breathing the next day or not. You don't know if there's going to be anyone to hold you tight. You don't know if they, your parents are actually scared to hold you because they think you're weak and fragile. But there's always going to be people to explain that, no, this is not what happens. There's always going to be something there. There's always that annoying little guidance counselor that comes in, hey, you want to do stuff? And most of the day, you don't want to do stuff. You don't want to do anything at all. But then she keeps on poking you and you're like, okay, let's do a puzzle. And then you laugh and then you wonder, are you going to laugh like that again? And then years go by, like months, and you're out of treatment and then you see them and you laugh. Because you don't remember the sad things. You don't remember when you're dying. You don't remember the time you were in the die study. You remember them sitting right by you. You remember them holding your hand. You remember that one time they messed up and said something stupid and you're like, you're a medical professional, really? You don't do, you just don't. You see them as people. That's the family that the Valerie Fund provides. And when December came around and they decided, hey, we're going to donate toys, I jumped up and said Valerie Fund. Because that's a family. You can have a billion other organizations and I still say Valerie Fund. It's weird that they stick with you. I even get calls from them now. My mom just got a call when I was in school and she was like, how's Diana? And she was like, ah, she has the allergies. Well, why? She doesn't button up her coat. And then she calls me! And then I have to hear earful of it. But they care about you. And our class wanted to give back to it and we did, with two thousand five hundred dollars estimated in gifts. I don't know if that's a lot considering, but I don't like to put a money value on what they gave me because they gave me hope. They never let go of me. I would be crying, I'd be bawling my eyes out. And they'd still be there poking their head into my door and being annoying, but the best kind of annoying, the family type of annoying.
And next up? Is Jefferson Arts Liberty Dancers, Artist Simply Human. Ooh, she got me crying. Okay. Hi, my name is Julia Santiago and I'm a liberty dancer.
My name's Ariana Ruiz and I'm a liberty dancer.
Hi, my name is Nathaniel Tapia and I'm a liberty dancer.
Hi, my name is Patricia Lazitton and I'm a liberty dancer.
Hi, my name is Darlene Kissengula and I'm a liberty dancer.
Hi, hold on. Hi, my name's Aliana Maynard and I'm a liberty dancer.
Hello, my name is Griffin Mendonza. I am a senior at Jefferson Arts Academy and I'm here representing the liberty dancers. This year, we raised a little over three thousand eight hundred and forty dollars. And that, yeah. And our two main fundraisers ran by Ms. Marr. You can clap for her too, she's over there. Were, in the beginning of the year, we did haunted hallways and then we just had our glow party a week or two ago. This money is, was raised for our team of fourteen, so we're missing a few, to attend the ASH Dance competition in Atlantic City and it's actually this Friday. So we're leaving very soon and we're excited. And we're coming back on Sunday. This competition is also a convention, which means it consists of master classes in all different styles of dance and of course, our competition. This opportunity is one that many high school dancers probably wouldn't get to experience. And we all work very hard and we've all put in countless hours after school rehearsing and of course, preparing for this competition. It's like we build a family here, so yeah. And I know I speak for the whole team and of course, our choreographer and director, Ms. Marr, again, when I say that we're very excited to be attending. Thank you for your time and have a good day.
Last but not least, please welcome our students from Admiral William F. Hawsey Junior Health and Public Safety Academy, Manuela Lopes Link Up for Life Campaign.
Hello, my name is Manuela Lopes and these are my peers. I was nominated here today by my principal because he wanted to recognize me for being a part of UC STEP. And what we did is we found a way to prevent suicide around Union County. It all began when I wanted to find a way to get more involved. My amazing English teacher, Ms. Shrimpa, she, well, she like recommended that I would go to this trip at King University. And of course, I said yes because you know, a day out of school. But I wasn't really sure what I'd get into until I got there. And the whole day, they just tested us and to see how well we can work together and what we can come up with like in short period of time limits. So yeah, and the end of the day, we were given thirty minutes to come up with a way to raise money and awareness for suicide. And that was very overwhelming since it was like thirty minutes for this big life changing thing. And in the end, it worked out very perfectly. I think there was about twelve teams there that day and two won, which was my team, the blue team, and the orange team. The blue team, we, we came up with the idea to have a five K run and that to like raise money for our charity, which is Care in Contact. And the orange team, they came up with the idea to write links that say part of quotes, positive words, just to like make students feel like they're worthy and they have purpose to really put a smile on their faces. So UC STEP decides to put both our ideas together and it became this whole big wonderful amazing thing. So how it works? We had almost a month to get everything organized. To make it more interesting, competitive, UC STEP, they give us certain points for everything we do. So if we decorate the school with our links, we get a certain amount of points. If we upload videos on the internet, we get some certain points. And the school with the most points wins a one thousand dollar grant, which is very like life changing for like our schools. Every week, our teachers, they send in a weekly report that says how many points we've earned to keep track. And yeah. So some of the things we've done so far is we've uploaded videos. Our first video is more inspirational. It shows students and reminds them that they are worthy, that they have purpose, and it will affect their friends and family. It's just really good. And then the second one, it's more, it's kind of more sad, but it informs you that it's more common than you know. It's more eye awakening, more eye opening. We also decorated our school with posters, with our links, and our links are all created by our students. We always make sure everybody is involved. We even offered our students community service hours for taking part in making those links. And our charity is called Care in Contact. It was founded in 1975. It's a hotline which provides active listening support. There's over 100 volunteers that run it, and all our profits and donations are all going to our charity. And I encourage you all to come to our run, that's this Saturday. It's at Oak Ridge Park, Cliff, Clark. And the run starts at nine. You don't have to run, you can walk if you would like. There's music, there's gonna be food, and awards as well. If you guys wanna join, I have some flyers. If you wanna see me, I'll be in the back, or if you wanna grab them now, I'll be right here, since I'm the last one. But thank you so much. I'd also like to thank my teachers and my principal. Special shout out to Ms. Lopez and Ms. Shrimpa. So yes, thank you so much, everybody.
Okay, well, that was the last of our presentation. Can we give all of our high schools a big round of applause? Thanks again to all of our high school students who came up here this evening and shared with us how they are making a positive difference in the lives of others. April is Autism Awareness Month, and I am proud of the members of our school communities for the activities, the lessons, and the events that they have scheduled during this month to help raise awareness and understanding of autism spectrum disorder. Here is a video that provides a glimpse into the activities related to autism awareness that have already taken place and will take place this month in all of our schools. Oh, yes, Madam Vice President?
I just wanted to say a couple of words before the video. And you know what, I'm gonna, I'm gonna stand, cause this deserves standing. I'm gonna ask my special ed committee members to stand with me, cause we're a team. Good evening, everyone. So I was, you know, the team had said that they prepared a video, and I said I have to say a couple of words before our video representation of this week. So April's a full month, so a lot of things are still going on, but we captured a couple of things before this week that we wanna show you, since we're all together. Before though, I thought it was an appropriate time, appropriate place, and appropriate month to go over some highlights we've been doing in our special ed world. So first is our Year of Awareness, our autism awareness calendar, which is posted every month that's provided. It has in-district events and out-of-district community events that our team, our parents, our children can play a part with. If you, Jay, if you can help me out, as on our website also, our special education website has been updated. If you go all the way to the bottom on our website, it has a lot of pertinent information, resources, all the way at the end. If you go into our department special ed, scroll all the way down, all the way down, Jay, keep going. So it has inside, and then it has all the information, under department special ed, all the information, the resources are there, have been updated. I really encourage our parents, our students, to sit down, sit back, learn, and read, and be informed. Our EC PAC has been doing their monthly workshops. Our district, we actually started our parent workshops, so every month, we've been, which is found on our calendar, we've been doing parent workshops, which have been very, very successful. Our last one was with our Union County members that explained what events are out there that we can enroll our children during the summer. Continuing on, I'd like to mention our upcoming, we have a resource fair now, May 4th. And now to this week. This week, we've had parades, we've had walks, we had bubbles, lots and lots of bubbles, all throughout our district. Also, I'd like to give a special thanks to Mr. Coto and his team, primarily Nino, that have developed a new life skills room for our high school students that was brought to life and opened this month. So that's really important. So again, this couldn't be done without team effort, team effort of our administration, starting with our superintendent, Olga, our director, our director Diana Pinto Gomez. She's been out there, our supervisors have been out there blowing bubbles, have been doing, providing services. CTS, CST team, pardon me, our teachers, our staff. It's just a whole big team effort, even IT. Capturing the beauty of what happened this week is just incredible. And our board members, our board members that support everything that happens in our special ed department, thank you. You know, I really believe God gave us an ability, an ability to help our children. So everybody sitting around this table has that ability, so don't forget to it. Now, that's one of the most important jobs that we as board members have, to help our children, help them get services, help them learn, help them hold a pencil, help them speak, simply help them to be happier. So sit back, enjoy, and see what happened in our district during this week. Thank you.
It takes a village. It takes a will. It takes some work, and it takes time. Later on this morning, when we honor our autistic teachers, all I wanna say, on behalf of Ms. Kulik and I, we are the most dedicated and selfless people that we've ever met.
That was absolutely, absolutely beautiful. Thank you for our administrators to helping us put this all together, to Madam VP Barbosa, and to our special ed committee, and to everyone who believes in what they just presented. And I am very, very proud that this is only week one, and April still has a few more weeks, and we will continue on this journey as long as we continue doing it together. Can I just ask for our high school students to just come on up so that we can take a big group picture? And then we do have certificates that your administrators will personally hand you, and then we'll get right back onto this agenda. Two seconds? Thanks, guys. Can we have our high school administrators join us?
And hold, hold, hold.
Okay, so we're gonna continue. One more Stars of Excellence, and then we'll get to our agenda. Congratulations. Okay. So in recognition, we'll let everybody get settled a little. In recognition of Autism Awareness Month, our Stars of Excellence for this evening are the Director and Supervisors of the Elizabeth Public School Special Service Department. Through their leadership, and they help ensure that our students who have special needs, including those affected by autism spectrum disorder, are receiving the services and educational opportunities they deserve. We believe that all students can achieve at high levels, and here at Elizabeth Public School, all means all. Please join me in applauding the leadership of Elizabeth Public School's Special Services Department. Please come forward as I call your name. Special Services Director Diana Pinto Gomez. Supervisor Scott Cohen. Supervisor Valerie Dunn, pardon me Valerie. Supervisor Ali Malik. Supervisor Justine McConney. Supervisor Mr. Andrew Morris. And tonight I also, I just saw out and we have Councilwoman Pat Perkins, which also supports this cause inside, outside, everywhere. Thank you for coming out. And to the moms and dads of any special needs child, I salute you too. You're very awarded. Does anybody want to say some words? Oh. Okay, before I give the mic, I did see some of our EC PAC parents out there, so they are definitely very important.
Thank you for all who joined us this evening. At this time, I would like to share a couple remarks before opening the meeting to public participation. I have designated office hours from 5:30 to 7:00 PM every Monday night during which Elizabeth families may make an appointment to meet with me and discuss any issues or concerns pertaining the Elizabeth Public Schools. I want to thank the members of the school communities I recently had the pleasure of visiting for being so welcoming. As you probably could see in the video shown earlier, I really enjoyed the wonderful educational experiences that were taking place. I am looking forward to visiting more schools in the weeks ahead. Once more, I would like to applaud our school communities and the members of our Special Services Department for their roles in raising awareness about autism spectrum disorder and making sure that every child has the opportunity to achieve excellence in our schools. This week is National Assistant Principals Week, so we want to thank all of our assistant principals for the great work that they are doing at our schools to ensure and provide a high-quality education to our students. Looking ahead to May, we will be celebrating Teacher Appreciation Week and National School Nurse Day. To our teachers and our nurses, thank you for all that you do to help our kids stay healthy, develop strong minds and bodies, and excel and achieve their dreams. To our learning community as well as those celebrating Easter and Passover, enjoy a happy, healthy, and safe spring recess. Last but not least, on behalf of the Elizabeth Board of Education, I would like to congratulate Dr. Antonia Pantoja, School Number 27 teacher John Griffin, for being elected to the new president of the Elizabeth Education Association. I don't think he's here. Yep. Mr. Griffin has already been serving the EA as its first vice president and has been involved with the current contract negotiations with the EA. We look forward to working with Mr. Griffin and his new capacity as president to continue negotiations while continuing to strengthen the relationship between the board and the EA. Just to share with our public community, we have regular negotiation scheduled meetings and hope to settle an agreement to everyone's satisfaction by the end of the school year. It would, I would be remiss if I did not take a moment to acknowledge outgoing EA President Joe Curtisso. He has served the EA admirably for many years and has been a steadying presence as we have had to reach agreements for various complex issues and circumstances. We appreciate his dedication to the members of the EA and Elizabeth Public Schools community as well as his willingness to work with the board to balance the needs of the students of Elizabeth Public Schools with those of the EA membership. As a board, we are optimistic that we will continue to work together with Mr. Griffin, the rest of the elected officers of the EA and its membership in that spirit to both make progress as a school district and to provide an environment that is rewarding for all members of the Elizabeth Public Schools community, including those who serve it. Thank you. At this time, the microphones are open for public comment to those who have signed in prior to the session. I shall call individuals to the microphone based on the order of the sign-in. Each statement made by a participant shall be limited to three minutes in duration. The total time of public comment shall be limited to 60 minutes. No individual is able to yield their time to another individual. All statements shall be directed to the presiding officer. No participant may address or question board members individually. The following rules for public participation shall apply. Time limits will be strictly enforced. No personal attacks on individuals. No vulgar or indecent language. A person may address the board no more than once during a single meeting. Speakers should refrain from naming individuals. Comments or questions posed during public participation will not be debated. As a reminder, this is a meeting of the board in public, not a meeting of the public. At this time, I call upon Ms. Elizabeth Bain. You can give it to Mr. Kennedy and he will. Oh, yep.
Thank you. Well, first I want to thank you for allowing me to speak at the Board of Education, the Elizabeth Board of Education, New Jersey. My name is Elizabeth Bain. I am the Outreach Coordinator for Quenion Professional Health Services. Quenion is a multicultural mental health and substance abuse facility that just moved in on 200 South Street in New Providence, and we cover all of Union County. So I just want to introduce us to the neighborhood and let you know that we're here. So this is actually Dr. Cassell's sixth facility. He has two in Ewing, one in West Orange, Flemington, Phillipsburg, and of course his newest one in New Providence, which covers all of Union County. Some of our specialty treatments include anger management, self-esteem, bullying, anxiety, ADD, ADHD, autism, social skills, parenting skills, life skills, grief counseling, trauma, mental health, and substance abuse. If there's something that you didn't hear that you want, that you want us to have, to implement, we will be more than happy to implement it in our facility. That's what's great about us because we're new and we're growing. We accept most private insurances, Medicare, Medicaid. If you don't have insurance, you can talk to Dr. Cassell about a sliding scale fee. We accept children ages four and up through their lifespan, teenagers and adults. We provide transportation all throughout Union County. So just to give you an example of a typical day at Quenion, we will pick up our patient at schoolwork or home. We'll bring them to our facility. We'll provide them with a juice, snack, coffee. They'll see the therapist or the APN. We also do medication monitoring. We are an intensive outpatient facility, so our patients will come to us anywhere from two, three, four times a week, whether it's group, individual, counseling, family. And like I said, we also have an APN onboard and we do medication monitoring. Our facilities are beautiful, they're very warm and welcome. Everyone that comes to Quenion is part of the Quenion family. I am so blessed to be part of the Quenion family. I would love for you to take a tour if you want to see our facility. I'd be more than happy to show you around or if you want me to come to your schools and speak to the counselors, I would love to do that as well. Our intake process is really easy and it's painless. All you have to do is call the number on the front and you can, let's say you call on Monday. By Wednesday, we'll be calling you back for an appointment for an intake. You'll have your intake on Friday and it takes like an hour. And by the following week, you'll be seeing a therapist. So like I said, quick and easy and there's no waiting list. So anyway, I'm gonna leave brochures, you know, I guess, well, I passed you out my brochure, so I hope you read them. And our facility is fabulous. And I just want to let you, just one more, just leave on one more note. A lot of people ask me, Elizabeth, what exactly does Quenion stand for? And Quenion is Dr. Cassell's father's name. It means Day of Empowerment, and every single day at Quenion is a day of empowerment. Wow. Thank you.
Thank you. Seeing no more have filled out for public participation, at this time, I close public comment portion of this meeting. Ready to go through the agenda? Okay. Let's go through the agenda. Okay. Tab 1A. Any questions or comments, concerns? Tab 1A? No? Okay. Tab 1B. Questions, comments? Okay. Tab 2. Mr. Cuesta.
Good evening. So ladies and gentlemen of the board, before you, for your consideration, you have certain items, including but not limited to eight appointments. And I would like to highlight that one of those appointments is a librarian, something that is rare nowadays that we can find, but we, we found one. And I want to thank Commissioner Moreno for the referral. A person works in another district, but she wants to change, and we are happy to, to welcome this new individual, if you approve her application, of course. We have 10 transfers and they are mainly due to either promotions, corrections, or individuals requesting those transfers. We have two resignations. We have 16 retirements, which is common this time of the year. And I would like to highlight two promotions. Security guard to a CDA and a sub custodian to a multi-purpose bus attendant. And last but not least, there are a number of individuals who are getting a raise due to the fact that they have obtained their masters or six-year level. Actually, one more item I'd like to highlight is the fact that, for your consideration also, we have two substitute security guards. And I would like to take advantage of the opportunity and say thank you to Director Glacking for having recommended this idea to our superintendent a few months ago. We have hired several substitute security guards. It's an opportunity for them to prove themselves. And once they do, they are promoted. And in today's agenda, you have two individuals who have been recommended to be appointed as security guards. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cuesta. Any questions or comments on tab 2?
Yes, only one comment. Thank you, Mr. Cuesta. I just want to let the community know, I represent at the state level and I always looking for high-qualified African-American and the librarian is representing African-American. And this is to respond to the African-American community. It's when I'm asked, they refer to her as a high-qualified, and I'm happy for the district. I, one of the person who, we want to respond to our African-American community. And I'm looking forward to every high-qualified candidate, like I find out at the state level, I will, I reach the Human Resources Department to the interview. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Anyone else regarding tab 2? Seeing then, tab 3, Tuitions Report. No questions or comments? Mr. Kennedy, can you please place tabs 1 through tab 3 onto the agenda, please? Tab 4, Consideration, Superintendent's Report Considerations. Tab 4B, Use of Facilities. Any questions, comments, or concerns?
I have a question, Madam President.
Yes.
So I think this may have come up before, but I don't remember the answer. Do we have a list of the places that we, that, that get exempt? Is it Mr. Coto, you go over these, right? And you receive it? Or Mr. Kennedy? Is there like a list that is, the people on here, I, I see a lot of them, you know, state troopers, America's United Soccer Academy, so those are normally waiver of fees?
We, we count, we compile each month based off these reports, who's using our facilities and when. I know I've shared it with the Finance Committee, I could certainly share it with the rest of the board.
A shared, the?
The schedule that lists who's, who's using our facilities.
Any other questions or comments or concerns regarding 4B Use of Facilities?
God bless you. Thank you.
Nope? Okay. Tab 4BB, Use of Facilities. Questions, comments? Tab 4C, Field Trip Considerations.
Mr. Cortez, if you could please provide a summary for this month's report?
Yes. This evening, we have 114 total field trips. Eighty-four field trips are for pre-K and K-8 schools. Thirty field trips are for our high schools. Eleven field trips are scheduled for colleges and universities. Twenty-one to zoos and aquariums, and 15 trips to various museums. To date, as of April, as of, as of this board meeting, we have 523 field trips. At this time last year, we had 487, which is a difference of 36 field trips.
That's great news. Definitely number growth there. Thank you. Mr. Cortez?
Madam President, I have actually some comments and some questions. So I, I was gonna ask Mike Rijo, there's on, there's a? Oh, okay. So maybe then he can get back. There's on page 15, I see that a number 58, Mr. Cortez, again, the, the school buses. So here they will be, be provided by the district, but then request number 61, they are?
because one of them is covered and the other one is not. And actually, then I wanna switch to our Director Special Services and maybe let us know about, is that the Autism Day at Six Flags? We did that last year, is that this year too? Correct, number 58?
That is correct, and we're taking more schools this year.
We're taking-
To Autism Day in Great Adventure.
In Great Adventure. Oh, you said more schools, because that was gonna be my second question. Is this the only school, but there's more schools?
There are more schools this year. There's 28, nine, and 12.
Can Board of Education members go?
Sure.
Okay. And then, after I was just, my last, I see a lot of, as I went through it, a lot of them are just simple walks to, for example, our Kellogg Park, our Matano Park. So I really wanna highlight those principal, sometimes it's just a simple walk to the park and, you know, getting out, that's important. And especially even, you know, and I'm gonna say this loud, maybe our teachers can hear, our special needs kids. We have Matano Park that has, you know, slides, has a play area that's specifically for special needs, and it's something that is in our area. So, but I was happy to see that there's a lot of inner-community trips, Mr. Cortez. So I like that. And a lot of them are walking distance, so there's walking, so I'm not gonna ask the question about the bus.
I would have to credit the schools for being creative, it really wasn't my idea.
Oh, okay. Well, you can pass the word along.
All right.
Some teachers, yeah, you don't even have to, it's simple, go to the park and sit, and I saw the rationale. Students learn from that. Very nice, I was very pleased. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Tab 4D.
I'll be providing the report on behalf of Mr. Fossler later this evening.
Thank you. Okay. Tab 5, Authorizations Report.
I'd like to ask Mrs. Sandra Nunes, our Director of Bilingual and ESL and World Language, if she could please speak with regard to the partnership with Jazz House Kids and how it's benefiting our schools.
Good evening, everyone. So at the beginning of the school year, Jazz House Kids selected three schools, School 3, 7, and 26, where they provided instruments to the schools. And so now, at the end of the year, there's going to be a culminating event where all schools will come together and will play together at School 26. So we're very excited, and the students have really benefited from having brand-new instruments in their classrooms, additional instruments.
I would like to present on behalf of our Director of Early Childhood, Tracy Crosby, the partnership with Prevent Child Abuse, that's referenced on the first page under tab 5. Prevent Child Abuse is applying for a grant in the amount of $100,000 to work with our district in bringing awareness of the impact that trauma plays on student health and student achievement. If awarded the grant, training will be provided to all district administrators, a core group of 100 school staff, who will become the Trauma Transformation Team to provide training and strategies to all personnel for pre-K through grade 12. So I would like to give credit to our Director of Early Childhood for seeking out this opportunity for our school district, and certainly hopeful that we are awarded this grant.
Wonderful.
As we continue on with tab 5, on page 2, Director McMullin, if you wouldn't mind presenting on the partnership with Prevention Links.
Sure. I'm very pleased to present the request for authorization for Prevention Links. They are potentially going, they applied for a funding opportunity through the Substance Abuse and Mental Health Services Administration Center for Substance Abuse Treatment, and asked for us, Elizabeth, to partner with them to reduce the onset and progression of substance abuse and its related problems while strengthening prevention capacity and infrastructure at the community level. If Prevention Links receives this, we would then partner with them to have the opportunity for their substance abuse coordinators to come in and screen our children in all 8th and 10th grades to then prevent the onset of substance abuse.
Thank you very much. I'd like to now ask our Assistant Superintendent, Dr. Sedeno, if you could please share with us details regarding our partnership with Ken University?
Yes, I am very delighted to put in front of the board today a partnership with Ken University and Elizabeth Public Schools and the Zhejiang Province in Hangzhou, China. To be more specifically, there are 10 districts in the state of New Jersey that will be partnering with 10 schools in China, and they will be exchanging on ideas regarding STEM and STEAM, really trying to build teacher capacity and student learning around the STEM initiative. So there will be a delegation from New Jersey that will be going to Wenzhou in this early June, and then the same equivalent will be coming in October to Ken University to participate in the exchange.
Dr. Sedeno, judging from your excellent pronunciation, I think that you would represent us very well.
Thank you, I'm working on my Chinese.
Can we all join you on this trip? That's amazing.
That's amazing. At our own expense, of course. That's on the mic.
Director Goldblatt, could I ask you to speak with regard to Law Day celebration?
Yes, we've participated in Law Day now for many, many years. This year, the theme is free speech, free press, free society. Our students in the 7th and 8th grade can respond to this theme either through an essay contest or a poster contest, and the winners are represented at the Union County Courthouse on May 3rd, and we typically send several students to this event.
Thank you very much. On page 3, I'd like to provide, Dr. Sedeno, the opportunity to present with regard to Character.org?
Certainly. So you have before you several schools that have applied for the Promising Practice for Character.org. It is an initiative around character education in the schools, and I'm happy to present that this is part of a continuum on a platform to build our district and becoming a national district of character. We have actually several schools that will be highlighted in this May. We have Jerome Dunn Academy that will be receiving a state award. We also have Francis C. Smith that will be receiving a state award, along with school number 29. We have Dwyer that will be receiving Honorable Mention Award on this day, and then we have school number 22, and Hamilton, that will be receiving an Emerging School of Character Award as well. So we're very happy to showcase these schools and these other schools that are applying for Promising Practice.
Excellent. Thank you. And as we continue on, on page 4, Director Marcel, if you could speak with regard to School 22 becoming an HP Showcase School?
Yes, School 22 and the Elizabeth Public Schools were nominated by Hewlett-Packard and Microsoft to be one of two schools for the Reinvente Classroom Showcase Schools nationwide. Hewlett-Packard, Microsoft partnered with Digital Promise, a national collaborative network for K-12 education. In an initiative called Reinvente Classroom, the initiative identifies and recognizes a school that embodies the educational innovation through the use of technology. And the organization will support the schools in its innovative initiative by awarding $25,000 of technology resources and 40 hours of customized coaching and professional learning from Digital Promise and HP. School 22 is planning to use the $25,000 towards the development of a Makerspace, which is a shared student work environment equipped with the latest tools and resources to foster creativity and innovation. And it's an honor to have one of our schools be one of two in the whole nation.
Thank you, Director Marcel. I know that you were instrumental in bringing this initiative to school number 22, and now they're being featured as a showcase school, so I thank you.
And also, the principal of 22, her leadership.
Absolutely.
Any questions or concerns on tab 5, Authorizations Report?
And I'd like to ask our Assistant Superintendent, Ms. Finch Johnson, if she could please provide a summary of the fundraising requests in this month's report?
Yes, this month, we have 127 fundraising opportunities for your consideration. They include various Mother's Day events, Father's Day events, officer appreciation, movie nights, family nights, Zuma nights, various brochure sales, Easter and end-of-the-year pictures, as well as graduation festivities, and also continued charity donation events for great causes like autism awareness, American Heart Association, We Campaign, Pennies for Patients, Leukemia and Leukoma Society. A lot of great causes that our kids continue to collect donations for.
Thank you, thank you.
Any questions on tab 5, Authorizations Report?
And I'd like to ask our Assistant Superintendent, Ms. Finch Johnson, if she could please provide a summary of the fundraising requests in this month's report?
Yes, this month, we have 127 fundraising opportunities for your consideration. They include various Mother's Day events, Father's Day events, officer appreciation, movie nights, family nights, Zuma nights, various brochure sales, Easter and end-of-the-year pictures, as well as graduation festivities, and also continued charity donation events for great causes like autism awareness, American Heart Association, We Campaign, Pennies for Patients, Leukemia and Leukoma Society. A lot of great causes that our kids continue to collect donations for.
Thank you, thank you.
Any questions on tab 5? Okay. Tab 6, Authorizations to Pay the Vouchers. Questions, comments, concerns? Tab 6A, Transfer Funds. Seeing none, let's go on to tab 7, Award of Contracts Report?
I'd like to ask Director Badalis to provide us with a summary of the contracts that are included in tab 7.
Hello, everyone. Tonight, I'll highlight two of our contracts. One is with Learning Sciences International. We're excited about this one because it's going to provide professional development to our administrators in the district, and Danielson and Marzano Evaluation Model and Framework, and that's going to help us build our teachers' capacity and enhance our instruction in the classrooms. And ongoing with our parent workshops, we are putting through for two schools, another two-hour parent workshop, or there'll actually be two workshops, an hour each in the two schools, so we're moving forward involving our parents every opportunity we get. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. And Mr. Coto, if you could please provide a brief summary of the contracts included under tab 7?
For your consideration, we have two contracts with environmental consultants. One, to be able to move forward some testing that is required for the roofs of School 215 and 16 to make sure there's no asbestos in the roof. Another one is, another environmental services to monitor and make sure that whatever removal or of dirt to install a netting around the softball field at 28 is done per the DEP requirements. We also have the replacement of a rooftop air conditioning system in the print room at Edison Academy, who, a month ago, it really died on us, and a new boiler at School 13. Last year, just starting of the season, one of the boilers really died for us, and we were able to replace it. Now, this is the second one, so we'll have both boilers now-
Brand new.
Brand new. We also have, we are also asking for authorization to engage this mechanical contractor to, for a survey of all our steam traps. The Elizabeth Town Gas has a program in which we will be receiving 50% of the cost of the survey, and then after that, up to 50% of the cost of the repairs, in addition to 50 cents per term, which is a measurement they use to bill gas. So this is a good opportunity, and also will be, we will be probably seeing an estimated $80,000 to $140,000 saving by repairing the steam traps. And also will help, the fact that sometimes some of the smallest steam traps in the univentilators cause that the room doesn't get warm enough, and then we start getting some complaints, and the whole building is good, but also that unit is not good because the steam trap is not allowing the steam to go through. So that will do two things, will save some money, and will, you know, make the heating a little more consistent. We also have a small project to enlarge the kiln room at School 89, Sicarel, because they require a larger kiln to do the amount of work they do and the size of the work they do. So in order to do that, we need to go to DOE and approve it. We installed for now a smaller one there in the room, just to keep those going, but in order to do a larger one, we need DOE approval, and we need to move the wall of the room. And also, we are asking the board for rejection of all the bids for the auditorium renovations at School 80, because it came between $900,000 and $1,003,000. Our budget was around $440,000. So definitely, we have to work with the architects and the contractors to see what we need to address to bring them into the right budget.
Would you like that? Yes. Thank you, Mr. Coto. There is a common language throughout all of your summary, which was savings. It's appreciated. Director Goldblatt? Oh.
Where are we? Prevention Links, yes?
Right on cue, absolutely.
So this is, of course, a very timely topic on social media overuse and smartphone overuse, so Mr. DiDonato was able to identify this and bring them in during the day for our parents for a very meaningful workshop, so.
Thank you. Director Glacken? The contract would fit right uniforms.
Yes, pending your approval, in two weeks, during our Easter break while we're having our training, we are gonna be switching the uniform, as you saw two months ago, so we-
We're so excited.
Yes, and no, we're not wearing shorts. They are going to polo shirts, the tactical polo shirts, short sleeve and long sleeve, to go in compliance with the Federal Transportation Association when they're out directing traffic for fire drills, evacuation drills, they need to be seen. We're going into a more durable, it's called a BDU, a utility pant, with pockets on the insides. It would be more durable, better working for them. We have a brand-new jacket, which is reversible, it'll have security on, heat screen security on the back of everything. So, and we also have a pullover with the Elizabeth logo on it, and it'll say "Security" across the back, so they'll be readily seen. But it's long in the making, they've been waiting a few years, so we'll look more stylish too, I think. We may make GQ for security. You're up, Mr. Cannolino.
And also like to ask Director McMullin, if you could please share, and I know you've been working on this initiative for quite some time, you're very passionate about it. the Institute for Multisensory Education?
Yes, hi. So tonight for your consideration is a contract with the Comprehensive Orton-Gillingham 30-hour training that we would be providing in district for 54 of our staff members to build their capacity, to enable them to have a understanding of the structure and foundation of the English language. In addition, be able to evaluate and teach students in phonological skills, phonics, word recognition, spelling, writing, fluency vocabulary, and comprehension. This would enable our teacher tutors, who are currently working with our at-risk population, they would have a better foundation for teaching a truly multisensory, hands-on approach to literacy.
Thank you. Maybe Mr. Rodriguez would be able to, oh, I just got your attention, Mr. Rodriguez. Ms. Levitt is not here, and I know it falls under her. Page seven, the contract with Seashore Fruit and Produce?
Sure, we had, we had a bid opening for Seashore, and the lowest bidder, I believe, I'm sorry, for produce, and the lowest bidder was Seashore out of Atlantic City, and then we also had a bid opening for uniform, for division of personnel, for division of food services and nutrition, and American Wear committed the lowest bid as well, for both of those entities.
So Seashore, right? So Seashore?
Seashore won the bid for produce items.
Oh, Ms. Levitt's back. It's okay. Who had the contract this year?
Seashore.
Seashore had it?
Yes.
U.S. Foods. So that's just a huge price difference, which is amazing. It's amazing savings. Kudos for that, because it was at $411, and lowest bidder came up to $294, so we got ourselves a couple hundred thousand dollars in savings. And we also went to contract for American Wear as well, where we got a lower bid as well. Thank you, Ms. Levitt, for that.
Any questions regarding tab seven, from any of the fellow board members? No? Okay. Tab nine, summary claims list. Any questions, comments, concerns? Seeing none, Mr. Kennedy, can you please put tabs four through tabs nine on the agenda, please? Okay, so there's lots of resolutions. Hold on, I know that there's a sheet. Okay, so resolutions. Tab 10, kindness awareness month, 10A, National School Nurses Day, 10B, Asian Pacific American Heritage Month, 10C, National Teacher Appreciation Week, 10D, Special Education Week, 10E, Holocaust Remembrance Day, 10F, Better Speech and Hearing Month, 10G, Bilingual Multicultural Education Month, 10H, Payment for Medical Health Insurance Waiver, 10I, UCESC Coordinated Transportation Services 2019-20 School Year, 10J, Acceptance of CAFER and Approval for Corrective Action Plan?
Excuse me, 10J? Some housecleaning on that one. If you remember, the auditors came in and presented our CAFER and their Auditors' Management Report, which the board accepted at the last meeting. The next step in the process is we have to prepare a corrective action plan, which, and we're also required to read the corrective action plan in public meetings, so if I could let Mr. Malhotra do that, then we'd be right up to speed.
Let's go for it.
Okay, so for the 2017-2017?
I think your mic is on.
Can you guys hear me?
Now I can.
Okay. For the 2017-2018 school year, we received six recommendations from the auditors. Recommendation number one is the district should implement better controls to prevent any over-under claims with regard to the Food Service Fund. The method of implementation is additional controls will be implemented to ensure accuracy of claims. The district has implemented a new point-of-service system. The person responsible for the implementation is the food services accountant. Recommendation number two, the district should ensure that the access reimbursement received for federal temporary emergency impact aid for displaced students be returned to the grantor, and that greater care be taken when filling out the quarterly counts of enrolled displaced students. Method of implementation, the business office will perform a secondary review on future temporary aid applications. The access funds received will return to the grantor. Person responsible, the comptroller. Recommendation number three, the district should reference the Uniform Minimum Chart of Accounts for New Jersey Public Schools and other available reference materials, such as the budget guidelines for the proper classifications required to be in compliance with NJAC 6A:23A-16, period 20. The method of implementation, the district will remind all users who generate requisitions to reference the Uniform Minimum Chart of Accounts to be in compliance with state guidelines. Person responsible, comptroller. Recommendation number four, that cafeteria cash receipts deposited should be reconciled to the daily receipts report produced by the point-of-service system. Method of implementation, the district has implemented a new point-of-service system. Cash receipts deposited will be reconciled to the daily receipts report. Person responsible, food services accountant. Recommendation number five, the district should establish procedures that will reconcile the students that meet the transportation requirements to the schools' registers. The method of implementation, the district will reconcile the students reported on the district report of transported students to the schools' register. Person responsible is the director of transportation. Recommendation number six, that the detail of the district's capital assets inventory be reconciled to supporting documentation, and that the accumulated SDA construction costs included in the construction in progress be analyzed and transferred to the proper inventory classification. Method of implementation, the district will reconcile the capital assets inventory to prior year supporting documentation and auditors' work papers. The SDA construction costs in progress will be reclassified and transferred into the proper fixed assets category. Person responsible, comptroller. That's all I have.
Thank you. Any questions? Tab 10K, Gloucester County Special Services Cooperative Transportation Agreement 2019-20, 10L, Maximum Travel Expenditure for 2019-20 School Year Revised, 10M, Residency Investigative Results and Actions, 10N, Contract for Professional Services Education Law Center, 10O, New Policy File Code 2225 Equity, 10P, Transfer of Capital Funds, 10Q, Payment of Unused Sick Days, 10R, Payment for Unused Vacation Days, 10S, Deed Notice, Thomas A. Edison Courant Technical Academy, 10T, ESC of New Jersey, Coordinated Transportation Services 2019-20, 10U, Appointing and Improving Nardone Brothers Baking Company, Inc., 10V, Appointing Seashore Fruit and Produce Company, Inc., 10W, Appointing Institute for Multisensory Education to Orton-Gillingham Training, 10X, Approving Acquisition of Three Vehicles and Authorizing Enter into a Five-Year Lease Purchase Agreement with U.S. Bancorp Government Leasing and Financing, Inc. Any questions on any of our tab 10 resolutions? Seeing none, Mr. Kennedy, please add tab 10 to our agenda. Any questions from our board members before we wrap up the agenda setting?
Ma'am President, I don't have a question. I have only two comments.
Yes.
First, I want to say thank you to Olga, Chief Representative of Washington DC, for the 24 Annual Capital Foreign High, Hispanic High Education. Ms. Min, I'm very proud. Second one is for our Madam President. Okay, I have some words I need to read, because, you know. Stephanie, Madam President, wishing you joy and happiness on your wedding day this coming Saturday.
Oh, thank you.
Just a word to express, just a word to say how happy we are, we are as a board family. Wishing you a lifetime of the greatness, joy, love, happiness, and next meeting will be Ms. Pastana. Ms. Min, congratulations.
Thank you.
And wishing the best this weekend. Don't stress too much.
I'll try not to.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Rosa. Truly appreciate it. Anything else? Okay, at this time, well, thank you for all of our directors for spending your lovely, what's today?
Monday.
Monday. I'm lost this week, guys. It feels like I don't know what day of the week anymore. Thank you for spending our lovely Monday evening with us. Thank you to my colleagues for being able to have this meeting as a double. Meeting today? Hey, Madam VP would have been able to take on next week, but next week is the beginning for whoever celebrates Easter. It would have been Holy Thursday, and it would have interfered with some people's schedules, so I do thank you all for having the patience to sit here with us, and for whoever celebrates Easter, have a great Easter and enjoy your spring break. Hope you guys return well rested, and I will see you guys when I return. With that being said, thank you all for your time, once again, and at this time, the president requests a motion to go into private session to consider matters exempt under the Open Public Meetings Act, specifically for discussion of personnel matters, specifically interviews and labor negotiations and litigation, legal matters specifically technology, security, residency investigations, consulting services 403B, advisory services, authorization to apply for a Perkins Grant, authorization to submit application for a long-range facilities plan, considerations specifically use of facilities, contract negotiations, employee investment management. The board will reconvene in public and may add to the agenda. Can I have a motion and a second? Come on, Jerry, come on, Jerry. Motion has been properly moved and seconded. Mr. Kennedy, roll call, please.
Arbosa.
Yes.
Carvalho. Chevres.
Yes.
Jacobs.
Yes.
Marina Otega.
Yes.
Naron.
Yes.
Gonzalez.
Yes. Thank you, everyone.
Hernandez.
Oh, I didn't see, I'm sorry, Hernandez.
Oh, come on, Mr. Kennedy. Did she sneak up on you?
My apologies. My apologies.